Standing to receive the right question for Lord Mayor of Liverpool, councillor Malcolm Kennedy.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, in the other light of the evening, fire alarm being activated. Please leave the town mode at the nearest designated fire exit. Call off all assembly points at the rear exchange flags. Kindly ensure all my mouthwritings are switched off. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We just wait till the people who couldn't be bothered to listen to the ringing. Just not good enough, boys and girls.
Can I advise members about these absences? I've been seeing councillor John Calvert, Kate Cummings, Ian Francis, Uri Cladon, Ross Cladon, Ross Rhodes, Lil Jones, Richard Branson, Sir Mitchell, James Nokes, President of the House, Ari Raining, and Jeremy Robinson, all ready to further progress this treaty.
Councillor Mayor, that's me.
I believe councillor Roberts is in attendance. So Roberts, are you going to sit down?
Yeah.
Councillor Spurrow? Now, we'd like to emphasise that this is a key meeting. Can I therefore request that everyone present, including the public, treat this meeting in court of law, which will enable the business to be dealt with effectively from the start, councillor Ben. Use of social media and filming for reporting proceedings is permitted during council meetings. This does not extend to the filming of members of the public, and anyone wishing to film the proceedings are also particularly directed to the very sensitive issue of filming children without the express permission of their parents. With the permission of the council, by the officers of the union, with the permission of the council, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Lady Mary Simon on being recognised as the best local authority arts champion in the councillor category. This initiative celebrates the works of councils, councillors, and council officers, and thanks them for all the work they do in overcoming financial challenges to the sphere of the arts, stay in the centre of community life. May I invite Samuel West, actor, director, chair of the National Campaign for the Arts, to present councillor Wendy Simon with the award and to make a short speech.
It will be a short speech, I'll try not to hear you wanting less. Thank you for the invite. I'll try to be nice, but it's all... Go on, project. A few years ago, I visited Hull, just before their City and Culture bid was announced. That great news which produced this season's top Hull City tourist tour to visiting football fans, 'Here for the culture, you're only here for the culture'. A number of local councillors, they were apprehensive about what was to come, and I was able to enthuse and reassure them. How? Because I've been to Liverpool, and I've seen what this council and a city devote into the idea that culture and the city's lifeblood can do. As actors, we're sometimes in a very privileged position. Our work can affect people, and they can let us know, even by something as simple as being applauded at the end of our day's work, which many people don't get. I sometimes get letters from people saying they've enjoyed what I've done, even if it's only playing for the laundromat or Mr Silkridge. The National Campaign for the Arts and What Next set up Hearts for the Arts to show our appreciation of people who might not get much applause on fan mail, but whose work we love because it's a vital part of what keeps us human and delighted. This Hearts for the Arts award is going to someone very special, councillor Wendy Simon, Assistant Mayor of the City Council, Department of Culture, Tourism and Events, trustee of the Everyman and the Playhouse. I'm going to give you a few highlights from her extensive citation. In 2012, Wendy oversaw Sea Odyssey, a giant spectacular which brought three Royal Deluge Giants to Liverpool streets for three days. It also brought almost a million visitors to Liverpool, and media attention from around the world. The economic impact was massive, Liverpool businesses reported a 29% rise in trade. Wendy oversees the distribution of funds from Liverpool City Council to cultural organisations. The social impact of these programs serve Liverpool's diverse communities. They include the UK's largest African festival, Africa Oye, which attracts over 40,000 people every summer, and the Pugova Chinese Youth Orchestra proudly represents Liverpool's Chinese community locally and internationally. Wendy's work ensures that all cultural organisations funded by Liverpool City Council engage hard-to-reach and underrepresented groups. Every council reads something like Wendy. In words of one syllable, she gets it. She's a tired advocate for culture, she's worked across an incredible range of projects and events. This is from Jennifer Bodden, artistic director of the Everyman and the Playhouse. Wendy's been a trustee of our theatres for several years, her support for all we do might be assumed in this context, but what makes her a deserved recipient of this award is her encouragement for artistic bravery and thinking big. The city has a flourishing cultural sector, and that's due in no small part to Wendy quietly but consistently believing in its transformational power. The sort of things that Wendy champions are exactly the sort of things the NCA loves. They prove that the arts are for everyone, not just shouting in the evenings for posh people, and for participating in, not just spectating. We've always believed that art can enrich people's everyday lives, improve health and wellbeing, and make life less boring. Wendy lives that belief. Now, I got council tax bills from East End where I live recently, that showed that they lost 60% of their central government funding in 10 years. I know the picture elsewhere is sometimes even worse. In extremely trying circumstances, we know how much this council and its partners are doing to keep arts and culture at the heart of your community. Wendy's work, and the good it does, is enabled by the decisions to support arts and culture that you make in this chamber. Please, please, keep making it. At the heart of these awards is love, and we make no apologies for that. We love you, we love what you're doing, and we want you to keep doing it. This very shiny, very pink award is designed to draw all eyes so that wherever Wendy chooses to display it, we hope it cries out to have a neighbour. The nominations for next year's Hearts for the Arts Awards open next month, and now it gives me great pleasure to present the 2017 Hearts for the Arts Award for Best Local Authority Arts Champion to councillor Wendy Simon.
Thanks very much, and thanks to everybody who's made this award possible. I think everybody in the city knows that the commitment that Mayor Anderson has made to the arts goes above and beyond, and I think his phrase which you loved, and I know that it is the rock of fuel and regeneration in our city, is clear everywhere you go, both within the city centre and out into our communities. And the work that started from European Cultural Culture 2008 is truly embedded, and we'll see that next year when we have 10 years' celebrations since then and see how far. But I think that has also encouraged lots of local councillors to engage in work within their wards, within the arts and sports and culture, and that is fantastic too, of the range of activities that take place. Well, it's not just the arts and cultural organisations that make this happen, it's a whole council event. Every department in this city council has had some involvement in achieving where we are today. Lots of people that you don't see in planning, in highways, in licensing, in legal, all of those that make all those events that we have that are spectacular possible. Lots of people who are out there making sure, you know, sort of like these events take place safely, and also, the most important thing is that people have a great time, which we definitely do. So although this award's been named for me, I think this award is a tribute to every single person who represents the city and every single person who works in the city council. So for you, I think it should be the biggest applause. So thanks very much.
Okay, I have another excellent piece of news to follow that up with. When I can advise members of the recent birth of councillor Tim Wood's daughter, I extend our congratulations, and certainly my personal congratulations, from the council to both Tim and his wife. More sadly, can I advise members of the recent birth of former councillor John Backhouse, who served as councillor for the Walton Ward from 1988 to 1996, and I can send on behalf of the council to his family our sincere condolences at this time. Chris.
Declarations of interest. Can I remind members that you are required to declare at meetings any disposable, peculiar or prejudicial service in which it is permitted to leave the chamber during the consideration of that meeting? Are there any short declarations for members?
Next item in the minutes of the last meeting are the meeting minutes of the civic council meeting held on the 19th of July 2017 agreed. We move on to public question time, potential statements. I can advise the council of two statements have been received. First statement received from Derek Gould in relation to motion 15 on the agenda. Can I invite Derek to address the council?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, City Mayor, members of the council. I'm a retired NHS consultant and medical researcher. I'm here today seeking your support for the Vision Zero motion, which you will consider later this evening. Although proposed by the Green Party, it could have been penned by any group currently represented on the city council. Indeed, who here would not set zero as a goal for deaths and serious injuries on our roads? It has often been said that the ultimate penalty of death should not result from the most trivial paralysis of concentration. Yet our current transports and culture appears to tolerate a mix where occupants of fast and heavy vehicles can run alongside those that are slower, vulnerable, and unprotected, leaving little margin for error. For too long, this infrastructure has supported a terrible and lasting toll of death and injury, which has simply been accepted, seemingly easier, more convenient, and cheaper than fabricating an alternative. It must, though, be clear to all in this room that the legacy and busy sites of Paul Lane Road KSI figures is neither sustainable nor acceptable. Today's safety in aviation, in healthcare, and in railways reflects the implementation of safe systems. Now, Sweden's total safe systems concept has shown the mitigating impact of intense cooperation across police, planners, and highways engineers on the safety of road transport. The Vision Zero proposal reflects only what has happened in London, Vienna, and many other places, including 25 US cities. Vision Zero is a goal that prioritises the protection of vulnerable people, whether walking, cycling, or mobility impaired. It drives targets that curtail the misery of death and injury. It reduces the working and cost of accident and emergency departments, and benefits public health medicine by removing the paralysis of daily fear, liberating millions of city dwellers through the oxygen of active travel. Indeed, the new Liverpool City Region Road Safety Strategy includes a commitment to a vision of zero road deaths. It was unanimously agreed at the combined authority on 14th of July this year, where there was Liverpool City Council representation. Police and Crime Commissioner Jane Kennedy has added her support by way of a fifth priority, committing the police force to road safety policies. For the sake of the people and visitors of this great city, I urge you to lend your strongest support to the motion before you. In common with policymakers around the world, please vote this evening for the irrefutable goal of a vision of zero deaths and serious injuries on our roads. Thank you for listening.
Councillor Mayor, if you would just respond.
Thank you, David Ford, Lord Roberts, and of course I think we will support the motion. The motion relates on calling on actions, and I think all this request of me is to work alongside the Beadleman and the PCC to look at, work on relevant data, to see is he committed to support the aim. Of course, we do, as always, as anyone here in this chamber, we want to do. So I think what we should also do is take it to a relevant selected agency, enable the regeneration selected agency to look at how we can actually learn from what's happened in the cities and see what things that we can do. I think that's just as important as giving lipsticks. I don't like just backing motions or saying they're backing us without a plan of action. So what I've committed is that we look at how we develop a report that we can bring back to council, to look at what actions we can take to improve safety also. That was recite this, but for people to go and back to obviously, that's what we might perhaps should be concerned about, the number of cars on our roads, cars allowing. You know, we used to see one car per family, now we see three cars, four cars, cars on the road. And the local values and people all want them, so we've got to look at that, got to look at the emissions and problems, and so happy to look at that and develop a policy. Because all the evidence of council, lot of safety, that will be defined.
We have received a second statement from Ari Henry, Dave Kelly from United Union, in relation to the motion 17 on the agenda. Can I invite Ari and James to address the council?
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name's Ari Henry from United Union, and I'm a co-author for the Department, and everybody you know is Dave Kelly, who's also from the Organising Unit to United. We're looking for support for a campaign we have with ISS, the contractor that work at the Royal Liverpool Road Green Hospital Trust. If you agree, outline, because we only have three minutes. We started working at the Royal Liverpool with the anti-trafficking legislation, and it was about the check-up of the hospital staff. While we're there, we bumped into these ISS contractors, and we've seen what basically we spoke to as a problem, as an issue. One of the main ones was sick pay. The check-up facility for NHS wasn't removed, so that just re-disassembled with these ISS contractors. So the sick pay was a massive issue. They used to get the same sick pay as the NHS, so it was six months full pay, six months off. The contractor came in, and they reduced that to 12 approved days a year, which as Dave puts it, you don't want food until December, so you're going to have to wait up that many days. We've got collective freedom that contains 270 names, employees, ISS employee. During this period, we started talking to them about all the problems, and they kept saying, well, what about Frida? And we're saying, well, who's Frida? And they're saying, well, she's a member, and she's really... Eventually, we found out Frida died, so as we went to her, we spoke to Frida's family. The employees were saying that virtually she was bullied. Frida had lung cancer diagnosed in 2015 in July, a month later she ever left the hospital. During that period, her sick pay had been out, so she spent six months on statutory sick pay with debts piling around her shoulders. In the end, she begged a doctor and said, please let me back to work, you know there's not enough money for me to live. The doctor said, white duties. He gave her white duties for two weeks, then dumped her. They pledged before a 20 headboard, previously it was a 10 headboard. Frida struggled, and every day her daughter, who's also called Frida, she picked her mum up from work, and every day Frida cried, and she just said she couldn't cope, but she had to, because financially there was nothing else for her. Eventually, Frida was put in dusty documents. The dust got on Frida's lung, and Frida lost her voice. She still struggled into work, because she was quite tough like that. Then, previously, the debts got too much, and Frida lost her own. She went on setees, and then eventually was took back into the hospital that she cleaned at, and Frida died of cancer December 9th, 2016. The daughter has been on radio, on the Liverpool TV. The daughter says that her mum should have died for dignity and not debt. What we're asking for was basically grievance to be earned, that may have been ISS scaling all that grievance, even what happened to Frida. We were left then with no option but to go to the public with petition asking them to support, which is what brought us to the council. In a matter of weeks, over 5,000 members of the public, doctors, nurses, and patients, as well as staff at the hospital assigned our petition, all have been upset and outraged that someone could be treated this way. We eventually tipped up the council, and it was like pushing on the door, the council was already five by one down, and offered support as well. So that is the motion statement that we've put before you. But we just want to thank everybody so well for their support. We do intend to look to other councils after, because we do need to make sure that this can't happen. We're not asking for six months holiday pay, we're asking for sick pay for sick people. You know, we expect it to be managed by every company who are sick people. We don't expect sick people to be punished.
I want to thank all the United Union members and all the members of the unions in the Royal Hospital, thank each and every one of you for the support you've given. And I think one of the things, most typical things I find in this job is going into a loophole with cleaners who will earn minimum wage, who will all say, do something, are very only cleaners. We've been stoked in them, cleaners on that side, in the Royal and in Portcave. You're one of the most important people in this job. I mean, it's embarrassing, can I say, a rogue employer like ISS Facilities Management treating people from their city with the disrespect they show them. But they picked on the Royal Hospital, they picked on the Royal Union, and they picked on the Royal City. Generally, you may miss, I think, if we could build our own campaign on various issues. Every single person who's heard Frida's story is moved, it's a real emotional story, and I believe the collective strength of our members, of our union, and the politicians in this city will get the only result. I'm absolutely heartbroken when I hear that ISS have 500,000 employees nationally and internationally, like throughout the globe, they make millions of pounds profits and go into the pockets of shareholders, while people in our city are actually dying with terminal illnesses, having to sit around. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'd like to pray for them to come and back here to raise a glass and celebrate the greatest legacy, the believers from each other, the marriage and the tale conveyed, getting the sick pay reinstated for a couple of years.
Lord Mayor, I know the deputy mayor and assistant mayor visited the Royal to make our and express our disgust and our anger at the way that the workforce has been treated here. I'll tell you a little story. I was hobbied about, of course, to fall in a muddle, and being wheeling on a truck from the house assessment, we were sort of to the second floor. I was hobbied by one of the... I was lobbied by one of the quarters just above. You're under treatment and you're seeing on me, so I have to say, yeah. No, seriously, it is absolutely essential that we get behind it. And I think, you know, what we've prepared has gone to people representing the workforce is spot on. And I think if we can, and we will not, if we will get them to change their mind and we're doing it in the name of Frida and it's absolutely right that we do that. Because I think in fairness, the whole chamber is united in support of all parties, which means that, you know, we can send a clear message to the chief executive of the Royal that we want action and want immediate action. Just one thing, just digesting slightly from, from the issue, it's always good to see Dave Kennedy here and I think it's important for us also to recognise the important work that Dave does, not only in his trade union work, but in supporting collection for food banks across the city. So thank you, Dave, for your...
Then, I understand the other motion to move for the terms of procedure that we're going to follow.
Yeah, so it's across parties, so that gives way to the councils. We're just agreeing everything, so it's across parties. If everybody agrees, it's just a thing to read the motion. So with the motion in my name.
Okay, and that, what we've done, just for those at the back who perhaps aren't aware, is to move motion 17, which was going to be passed forward to a select committee, brought it onto the floor of the council and agreed unanimously in support of the workers. And I have to say, as a grand son of Arsenal, the cleaner, I'm pretty pleased that you voted that way, thank you very much. We're going to, yes, I was... We're moving on to mayor of recommendations and discretionary council tax relief for care leaders.
Okay, Lord Mayor, this is a good news item in the sense that we are making sure that care leaders, who leave and school, are set out for, basically, the council tax, so are set out on the agenda, definitely, with the movement.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
As in, the change of circumstances is taken in the last steps.
Okay, Lord Mayor, this is a bit of the report on Asian masses is set out on basis 3640, so that's...
Can we note the report?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you. Mayor for the cool announcements and updates, then answer once again.
Okay, Lord Mayor, just a couple of things from, from me at the cabinet meeting since the, what, the cabinet meeting since the 20th of September, we've increasingly spent on homelessness by the million pound. The footholds, the Jorras, and Aids was released, three million pounds spent on footholds. We've increased £500,000 for sports funded for city physical activity and sports strategy. It will go directly to community groups. And as I said, the discretionary tax relief was granted to carers at the cost of, no cost to them. But we're just, to make a statement with regards to the situation regarding the chief executive, I just wanted to read a statement out because I've tried to, at all stages in this process, give people up-to-date information, the best we can, bearing in mind that we have to protect the city. So, as I said, that's, that's been important to me. But I think it's important also that people understand that throughout the process, since the chief executive of voluntary stepped aside, that I've discussed matters with the LTA, with the CLG, with also with vital officials, civil servants, also with the Solace Tribune, as I said, with the LTA, and one of all, we've taken sound legal advice from the City Services Centre and also from independent legal advice. I think members are aware, of course, that the appointments of disability panel less on Monday, after deliberating carefully, the situation that we're in, the panel agreed that an independent assessment and investigation be carried out into the issues with regards to the reputational impacts on the city at this current time. In agreeing that process, the panel also took a decision to suspend the chief executive, which I must stress is a neutral act. It's in the interests of natural justice and to protect the integrity and objectivity of the investigation that is important, that the whole City Council and its members take very great care when we address this, or take an issue or talk about this matter. I'm committed, Lord Mayor, to the transparency and I will keep the council updated as I have done so far. But as I said, I would remind members as well that we have a duty of care as council to all our employees. It's important that as the individuals' employment is dealt with fairly and that matters are kept confidential, particularly where the investigation or investigations are ongoing. And it's not appropriate to deal with these matters in the press. And today, Lord Mayor, I held a meeting with leaders, confidentially with leaders, just to discuss with them the current situation and of course, remind them of our obligation towards all employees. Confidence is, is a scar to death, Lord Mayor, and I was amazed to see the Liverpool Democratic Conference kick off with Ms Clegg saying that Labour and the Labour Party was demonising our state, as he said, and of course, it was him in 2013 and his conference told the whole country that we had to back up thirty and of course, we've got one of the big democrats in here telling Liverpool people to get away with the cuts. So, as I said, we'll see how we deal with the nineteen million cuts that we have to face over the next three years and of course, we'll bring you at the next council meeting an update as to where we are in, in the period before Christmas. So we'll give you an update on that. Lord Mayor, it's also worthwhile, we just point out a number of things as to where we are and what I said at the last council meeting and also in between the two council meetings. If, and that's an update in terms of things that are going on. One of the things that I said I would give up things on, we produced a report, was into the August Stogford Lonely Festival, which ran into difficulties. I immediately asked for an inquiry to be set up, an independent inquiry into that festival and what happened leading up to that weekend. The report was due to be ultimately out by the end of last month. Unfortunately, the organiser was away on holiday and since then I've had contact made by him directly to me, excuse me, me and the council, explaining that his mother is seriously ill and very ill. So in terms of being fair, in terms of natural justice, I've made the decision to put off the report for a number of weeks until we get his contribution and here is, sorry, the story. What I will commit to is that the reports will be published, they will be open, they will be transparent and, and it will be honest. I just don't, I thought, for example, you know, in regards to our approach to that particular report, I just wanted to ask people, do you know what this is? It's a bottle of pheromone, a bottle of pheromone. And you might say, well, what's that got to do with it? Well, let me remind you of how the previous administration conducted reports. And I think I keep a lot of information, I always keep things in.
You never know when you're going to be...
And I found this report, I was pissed off as you, having a report and finger people and others. Council of Orkney Bradley, leader of Liverpool City Council, in a confidential email leaked to Lee Ford two days after the publication of the council's Conservative Matthew Festival cancellation, I was pissed off with you. Let's read, yeah, just a little bit from the report from Lee Ford. And it's worthwhile mentioning because of course, it is the big democrats that are criticizing the way we're handling this report. And it says, "I had this discussion with a heavy heart over to the people of the city of Liverpool and I really had the whole, many days, soul searching. I know that it will damage the city I love and will shock many people, but I believe that the public has a duty to the truth to be told over what happened over the cancellation of the Matthew League Festival following the publication of the council's now de-credited internal inquiry report." And it goes on to make a number of points, basically, I'll remind people, but I'm going to put this online so you can all have a look, the whole document online. Because it gives the emails from Council Bradley and Council Story and both of them had bottles of pheromone in, in Warren Bradley's house, where Warren Bradley asked for information concerning the then director of the City Council's Culture Team, asking for damaged information so they could get rid of him, Jason Harborough. It's all in the emails, here it goes on to talk about it, what happened. And you know, the end of that, that report and what happened with that report, is it actually cost the city £240,000 because Warren Bradley and Mike Story contriving to get sacked, Jason Harborough, meant that he took the city council to court, or was taking the city council to court and we had to pay out £240,000. Now, we learned from that and that's why we won't make the mistakes and that's why the report that we do into that festival and its failure to deliver will be the independent report and it will be open, transparent, published and put out there for people to see. That's the way we do business in the Labour Party here. So the other thing that the big democrats have been putting out, but I think it's also important that we give an update, is the issue around Northpoint Global and the Big George Street situation. People in this chamber, especially men on this side, of course, won't remember the details of the history, but you see, I do, because we're like an elephant, walk like one, but also act like one. And part of lots of things here...